Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for April 18th. Note that we do have a quorum and we are whopping two items on our agenda, first being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes for April 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second. And any comments or suggestions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have agenda items for consideration, number two, an operator's license for Taylor Marie Totsky with a presentation by the chief.
Good evening. Unfortunately, I come before you again seeking a denial on this application. Because of our last conversation, I was a little concerned myself. Our goal in the city, certainly the department, is to have healthy, happy, productive members of society and don't want to be denying. I thought it was important to know that since the beginning of the year, we have sought approval of 71 applications. This will be the third looking for denial, so we're at about a 4% denial rate. So just because the approvals probably don't come before you, you don't hear that. I thought it was important to point that out. Unfortunately, tonight, though, we will be recommending denial for Ms. Totsky. You have the information in front of you. It's getting a little uncomfortable to drag all this dirt out in front of the public when they apply for these. So with your permission, I'd like to just provide a much briefer summary. Basically, within the last year since April 26th of 2021, Ms. Totsky has had three what I would consider major run-ins with the law, all involving operating motor vehicle under the influence. First one is again on the 26th of April 2021, Ms. Totsky was found semi-conscious in the driver's seat at West Washington in Villa Park, having been recently released from Milwaukee Hospital after overdosing. She was arrested for having failed the field sobriety test and operating with a controlled substance and was found to be in possession of heroin at that time. In May of 21, similar circumstance in Horicon. She was found by the Horicon PD, also involved in operating motor vehicle and was found with open intoxicants in their motor vehicle, an open bottle of alcohol. The OWI was not charged by Horicon PD due to some blood results that Horicon was working through. And most recently, August 21st of 2021, so eight months ago, Ms. Totsky was stopped on the side of the road, Highway 41, located by the Germantown Police Department with a 14-year-old subject in the car as a passenger. Ms. Totsky was unconscious and appeared to be overdosing. She was revived by Narcan and again found to be in possession of heroin, admitted that she had purchased heroin in Milwaukee, used and was overdosing at the time she was driving back. She was also arrested for bail jumping as she was on bail from that previous April incident and was not to use illegal drugs. There was a fourth incident in August of 20 in which she was found to have had open intoxicants in a motor vehicle by West Bend PD. Third time in a row, she, Ms. Totsky's on probation and parole and there was a recommendation by her probation officer to allow her to work in a Class A environment, which is a gas station grocery store allows to serve alcohol for consumption off premise. But it's very strict about not wanting her to work in any type of situation where she could be serving on premise, any type of tavern. As we know, operator's license in the City of West Bend is not compliant with or not reliant on the employer and can be used at any location. So based on our experience, last time I spoke with her probation agent, Ms. Barbara Korth, this morning, she said she's aware of the application. She would not be opposed to Ms. Totsky getting a license if it was restricted to a Class A, working at her current employer at the gas station, understands that while it's not reliant on her employment to have that license, if someone was there watching, probably at some point, Ms. Totsky's employers would want her to be alone, explained to her that a license can be transferred to any employer. She understood that and said she would have a very strict rule against having her work at any establishment that wasn't a Class A for consumption off residence or off site. Also learned in the past week that there's a legislative push by some municipalities to have the legislation look at passing a Class A-only license, which would kind of address this situation. But just in full disclosure, I believe based on the timeliness of Ms. Totsky's recent violations, we would still be recommending denial. In Ms. Totsky's, I guess, defense, her probation agent said she's working very hard at reentry into the community and working very hard to honor her rules of probation.
Thanks, Chief. And I know Ms. Totsky is in the audience, so if you would like, you can feel free to come up to the podium and let us know what's on your mind.
So I know I obviously caught a lot of charges between April, the end of April and the end of August. I had lost my dad and I kind of took it out on myself. And right now I am getting clean, like I've been clean for almost six months. I voluntarily do case manager appointments, counseling, and this is like my job and I'm trying to get my, my stuff together and get a job and be reliable and everything and work back to be a good citizen of the community. And I need this to get that. So I understand, obviously, it doesn't look good with my past and everything, but I have changed within these six months and I know I have a lot to work on, but I'm definitely not where I was supposed to be or where I was, so.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
I know your employer is also in the audience. Do you have any comments you'd like to say? Don't have to, I just want to acknowledge that you're here. Thank you. And I'll open up to the Licensing Board if there's any comments or questions.
I'll make a motion to disapprove.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been made a motion to deny and seconded. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of denial, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And again, as we've talked about, this is just a recommendation that goes to council later tonight. So thanks so much for being here. And having no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn by the call of the Chair.
I would like to call the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item one is approval of minutes, April 4th, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second. Any corrections or additions? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 2104, sidewalk installation and repairs. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. I have to say I have a typo in some areas of this memo. It's actually contract 2204. I apologize for that. So basically, this is our annual contract to repair sidewalks throughout the city. So again, like we did in previous years, we bid this contract with various sections in order to be able to do some, some work in case, you know, we get some high prices instead of rejecting the entire contract, we could still do some portions of it. So the base bid A is the sidewalk along Villa Park Drive that has been closed the past couple's winters because it's sinking. And this one was bid separately because it's not just a spot repair like the rest of the contract. It's something that contractors would could do using slip forming, which would be a lower unit price than the spot repair. So that's why we bid it separately in the hopes of getting a lower unit price for that. Base bid B covers the rest of the sidewalk from last year's contract that was canceled, plus other additional sidewalks that we had on our database of complaints. And the third portion is alternate one, and this was for sidewalks that property owners came up and asked to be added to the contract. So not necessarily a tripping fall complaint or trip hazard report, but just property owners wanted to add sidewalk to the contract. So those are all the three sections that we have on this contract. We received bids on Friday, April 8th, and they are listed in the memo. We have the low, the apparent low bidder is Ford Equipment from Grafton, Wisconsin. And the second low bidder is TP Concrete Services from West Bend, Wisconsin. As I mentioned in previous meetings and we had discussed this item, I would not recommend Ford Equipment, even though they are the apparent low bidder, because of our past experience with this contractor on city contracts. Last year, we had the water utility pavement repairs where the work quality was well below what we expected. And also, we had to do a lot of handholding with this contractor. And they also were successful in getting the sidewalk contract last year, which as you know, has been canceled because they could not perform there. So for all these reasons, we would recommend to award contract 2204 to TP Concrete Services in the amount of $248,226.50. And we also recommend a contingency of $13,773.50, about 5.5% of the total bid, for total allocation not to exceed $262,000 for, for this project. TP Concrete is a contractor that we have used for at least two decades or more, and we've always been satisfied with, with their work. So we would recommend awarding the contract to them.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions for Max? Alderman Delmick.
This may be for the city attorney. I, I know that we are permitted to not go with the low bid if we have a good reason. Do we have to document that somehow, just in the minutes or so that a year or two from now there is, it's remembered why we did that?
I, I think this memorandum documents it. We also have the previous action that was taken last fall terminating that contract. Certainly, it's something that has to be considered on a yearly basis in a case by case because it's possible that future work is performed for other municipalities that remedies the situations.
Sure. Just in case someone challenges, why did you do that?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the case law on it is fairly clear that this is not a decision that is challengeable by the contractor. This is a discretionary decision that's being made by council, and as long as there's a reasonable basis for it, it's not something that's easily challenged by the contractor.
Good enough. Thank you.
Alderman, Model.
Yeah, Max, hi. Good, good evening. Did, did we not go with TP Concrete last year and went with Forward Equipment instead because of price? Or so did TP not have a bid?
So they did not have a bid last year.
Okay. Okay.
Alder Person, Kennedy.
I just had one other question, Max. With TP, I know, was it last year that the work was subpar or the year prior? I just know with COVID and job shortages, could it have been they were having a hard time getting quality people or something like that? Like have we had them up until that point and never had a problem? Or is it, this is the one shot we had given them and it turned out pretty poor?
So for Forward Equipment, so that was the first time that they were working for the city was last year. We did have some calls to other communities where they had worked in the past. We had heard from Grafton in particular that when the company was first started, they struggled a bit, but they had improved. And I think last year, they went back to their struggling ways and they were not able to perform on the contract where they did work and they didn't perform on the other contract, they didn't do any other work.
Anyone else? Alderman, Perquist.
Max, is TP Concrete still a standalone business or is it a subsidiary of somebody else or vice versa?
So TP Concrete for several decades was a standalone company. They got purchased by another local company, BMCI, I want to say a couple of years ago, and they were plainly absorbed. But it appears that at least this year, they are again a standalone company. So BMCI is still their parent company, but what I see is, for example, the bid bond and everything is to TP Concrete Services. And that happens with several contractors where they would have their generic name and then they would put, for example, their equipment under a separate company, their trucks or whatever. So it's not unusual for this line of business. But as far as this contract is concerned, TP Concrete is the contractor that the city would have a contract with.
And we haven't noticed any change in quality or standards of the product provided?
No. So the TP Concrete team that has been under the BMCI umbrella has been doing work for the city after the transaction where they were bought out. And we're getting the same quality of work from, from those, from those employees or those, those crews.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? There are no more questions? We have motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from the April 4th, 2022 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions or changes on those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. We have four items on the agenda, items for consideration. We have a resolution to accept the donations to the Parks, Recs and Forestry Department, and Mike Yunch is here to tell us about that.
Thank you. This evening, we have several very impressive community donations that support a wide range of projects and priorities throughout our community. The first donations of $55,820 are by various citizens supporting the regular beach house renovation. These donations include $10,000 from the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation, $10,000 from Enchantment in the Park LLC, $25,000 from National Exchange Bank. Also, the following are designated as beach bum sponsors for the beach house project and have donated $1,000 to this project. The first bum this evening would be Craig Hepner and Judy Rupnow, also Jeff and Lisa Zukalski, Killian Management Services, McDonald's, Pat Carrier and family in memory of Al Carrier, Carol and Ken Weddigan in memory of Chris Wishkershine, who was a former alderman for the City of West Bend, Robbie and Gene Robran, Kohler Credit Union, and Mike and Tracy Nowak, round out the $1,000 beach bum donations this evening. We also have three additional donations to the beach house project. The first one is $20 in memory of Chris Wishkershine. An additional donation for the project in the amount of $1,500 to the, from the West Bend Professional Firefighters Charities Incorporated. And the last donation this evening for the beach house project is from John F. Rozek in the amount of $300. So again, thank you for those supporters and all the previous supporters for their beach house project. The next donation of $1,250 was donated by JW Speaker for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The next donation of $1,250 was donated by Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, West Bend Pediatrics for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The next donation of $1,250 was by Regalware Worldwide, again for a sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The next donation of $7,295.90 was donated by Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly of Jackson from proceeds of their charity of the month program. And this sponsorship will go to the West Bend Special Olympics Program. The next donation of $2,500 was donated by Whitetails Unlimited, Washington County Chapter. This donation will support the youth archery programs that we have out at the archery range on Municipal Drive. Thank you to Whitetails Unlimited, they are an annual donor for that range out there. And the last donation this evening of $150 was donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for the Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. So again, thank you to all the sponsors for their continued support of our community projects and park and recreation programs and activities. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you to all of our generous donors. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution amending the rates, or I'm sorry, accepting donations to the West Bend Fire Department, and we have Deputy Chief Beistill here to tell us about that. Hello.
Thanks, and good evening. This donation is a result of call for service from the family of the Scholzes from, from our department. The Scholz family show their appreciation of the services they received from our professional members in a donation of $75. We'd like to thank the Scholz family for their donation and ask the council permission to accept this to upgrade paramedic equipment.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Thank you so much to the family for that donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next up, we have a resolution amending the rates for emergency medical services for the City of West Bend Fire and Rescue, and we're continuing with Deputy Chief.
For the rates, the rates have not been increased since 2016, 2017. We researched it with our Battalion Chief in Charge of EMS and contacted our billing company, and the rates of which we sent to you fall in line with what they are currently billing out. So you're looking at about a 15 to 18% increase in the different areas that you see.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for Deputy Chief? Alderman, Allen?
Yeah, is this likely to go up again if the, the new Medicare reimbursement rates come into effect? I know that there's some legislation at the state that looks like it's going to get passed.
It shouldn't increase. It should help in our returns, though.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right. Lastly, we have a resolution amending rates for emergency medical services for the paramedic intercepts for the City of West Bend Fire and Rescue.
That also hasn't been increased since 2016, 2017. We're looking at increasing up to $350, but know that that won't go in effect until January 1st, 2023, letting the departments that we serve and do the intercepts for a chance to budget for that particular increase.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions on that? Alderman, Allen?
Yeah, it, I noticed it says that we don't charge them if we respond and they decide not to transport. Do we, we just do that out of goodness? I mean...
Typically, we don't use anything besides, you know, a short response time there and back. No supplies are really used besides the vehicles. It's a service in which we provide, we don't want to deter communities from, from using that service. And it'd probably be more, it'd probably cost more to, to bill out, get reimbursement than it would actually be worth.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Deputy Chief Beistill.
Thank you.
With no further business before the Finance Committee, I will adjourn.
And good evening again. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for April 18th. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note that we have 13, actually 14, and this agenda is kind of a little wonky. The first one should be approval of the minutes, so if I can have a motion before that, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Model and Allen. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have two presentations here. The first one is for the Arbor Day proclamation, if we could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Kayler. All those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, "Whereas Arbor Day is observed worldwide celebrating the role of trees in our lives, trees are among Wisconsin's most beautiful natural resources. The, the demands on our environment and resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values. And whereas Roots and Branches continues its educational efforts by partnering with West Bend High School Seeds Program to educate and inform the West Bend area public and private 4th graders about the importance of trees and reconnecting students with the outdoor environment. Whereas, West Bend has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 37 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation for its tree planting ways, care of the urban forest and high-quality forestry program. Now therefore, I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of West Bend. And I urge all citizens to support Arbor Day, the efforts to plant and protect our trees and woodlands for the well-being of present and future generations, and support, of course, of our city's urban forestry program." Thank you. And next up is number two, Milwaukee Riverkeeper Spring Cleanup with Roots and Branches proclamation as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. All those in favor of that proclamation, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this one so reads, "Whereas the residents of the City of West Bend are very proud of and enjoy the natural beauty of our community. And whereas, in order to foster and accept a clean, self-renewing environment, Milwaukee Riverkeepers, together with Roots and Branches and the help of individuals and community groups, promote an annual community wine effort to clean up and green up the earth. And whereas, all citizens are encouraged to recruit family, neighbors, friends and coworkers to pledge to pick up litter, making West Bend a cleaner, more beautiful place in which to live, work and visit. Now therefore, I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, as Milwaukee Riverkeeper Spring Cleanup with Roots and Branches Campaign Day in the City of West Bend. And I encourage all, all citizens to be aware of the Milwaukee Riverkeeper Spring Cleanup Event with Roots and Branches at Rington Park and volunteer to help make West Bend litter-free by picking up the Riverwalk, area parks, neighborhoods, schools and business areas." Thank you. I know we had a good turnout last year, I'm sure we'll have one again. And with that, I'll move on to consent to the agenda consisting of items three through seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. Any questions or corrections on this? Hearing no, none, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing, Public Hearing 2021 MS4 Annual Report and Stormwater Management Program. Max, do you want to present something first?
Yes, if you, if I may. Thank you. So the City of West Bend has been covered by an MS4 general permit since 2006, and this is a permit that is renewed every five years, and the current permit we are under was renewed in 2019 and will expire in 2024. This new permit requires that the city gives an opportunity to the public to comment on said permit and the actions listed for the city to satisfy the, the permit requirements. So this public hearing is to satisfy the condition of the permit. All the documents that we provide, that we generate and send to the DNR are on the city website, under the engineering page, you look for the MS4 program page, and then all the documents are there. The, the latest report, which was due March 31, 2022, is there as well, and it highlights the actions of public education and outreach, the public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site pollution control and post-construction stormwater management, and municipal stormwater pollution prevention, as well as stormwater quality management and TMDL requirements. For that last part, the City of West Bend is part of the Milwaukee River total maximum daily load, which means that we have to take action to control all the stormwater from the city going into the waters of the state and control the contents, especially the total suspended solids in the stormwater and the phosphorus components. So we have some tables in this memo showing each watershed and some data on these watersheds, the size of them, and the goals that we are assigned by the permit. The modeling that was done by our consultant, SEH, shows that the city is not currently achieving the... the requirement of the permit. And based on the language on the permit, we now have to develop a plan to outline how we will work towards achieving those goals. And so that's another portion of the report for this year, and we have listed some actions in that report showing what we would do during the next permit term, so 2024 through 2029, to work towards those goals. Some of those steps, some of the steps that we do have to take in this permit term include adding some language in our ordinance to address some requirement for proper pet waste management, for example, and urban wildlife that are potential sources of bacteria entering the city MS4 area. So as we go through those projects or designing them or planning what we need to do to implement them, we would be coming back to council and discussing the options and discussing the funding it would take to meet those requirements. So that is the presentation for tonight, and I will step back and see if anybody from the public wants to make some comments or have some questions.
Thank you, Max. And just to confirm, there's no other action that needs to take place, just the public hearing?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
First, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak, feel free to come on up. Otherwise, yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. It's been made a motion, second to end the public hearing. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Happy, Max?
Thank you.
All right. And move on to agenda items for consideration. We have an operator's license for Taylor Marie Totsky with a recommendation from licensing to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you, Berquist and Allen. And I will open it up to our council. If anybody has any questions, I know Ms. Totsky is still here.
Chief, if you don't mind, if I can, if you mind if I ask you a question real quick? It sounds like the probation officer, parole officer, whatever, didn't have a problem with this, again, kind of like the last one, if she was just staying within the gas station environment. How did, how was, did she have any suggestion as to how to regulate that or?
She was very clear that if she found out Ms. Totsky was working somewhere other than, I believe it's Shell South, the gas station, that she would view that as a rule violation. What action she would take, she didn't commit to.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chief, let's say that there was, and by the way, I'm really, was, I was very happy to hear that someone is finally thinking about doing something about the Class A licenses and the class, the problem with the Class A and the Class B premises, because this has been going on forever. Assuming that we had that distinction now, and she would be limited to just a convenience store, would your position be the same?
Unfortunately, because of the recency, I think she's on the right track from everything that I've heard today, but I think because of the recency, when we're talking August, eight months ago, I think I would still, I don't think, I would still be recommending denial.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Just a question. She's currently, or was working at Shell South, which is no longer, correct?
Thank you.
Oh, it was Shell West. Somehow on here it was Shell Salt, I thought. Okay. I just thought that might, my gas station isn't there anymore. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Yes.
All right. Well, one, I just want to say it takes scouts to show up here, because you have all these people staring at you, and it's uncomfortable. So it's awesome that you showed up. I guarantee you, every single person in this room, in this council, wants you to succeed. I truly do, and it's, like I said, it's daunting to stand here and feel judged by all these people that have different points of view on your life, but, you know, and we're here to try to make the community the best. And third, not even as an alderman, but somebody that lost a good friend to heroin, you are really lucky to have been in our hand back two to three times. So count your blessings on that, because I've lost a friend to that drug. So, you know, just so you know, you're so lucky to be here regardless of what happens with the liquor license. I just want you to know. Not that I'm voting for or changing my point of view on this. You know, six months clean is huge, and I really hope that you keep going, and I really do hope that they change the law on this so that, you know, a convenience store, you know, I think you're doing the right things. I'm so glad you're in treatment, and I'm so glad you're trying to make a change in your life, because so many people don't have that option. So please, keep doing what you're doing, and, sorry, I'm getting emotional thinking of my friend that I lost, but you're doing the right things. I just want to tell you that.
Thank you, Megan. Well, that's a great note to end on, but I will open up for a vote. We do have a recommendation to deny. We have a motion second, so all those in favor of denial, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. But I will echo those comments. Please keep up the good work. We're excited to see you succeed, not only in our community, but in your own life. So thanks so much for being here. And with that, our next item, well, it says that update, this really should be under reports, so I'll call it a report. This is a report regarding the West Bend Fire Department Analysis Report, and we'll have that by Alderman Kayler.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Department met on April 12th, and we had a fairly long meeting. I'll kind of keep it brief. Topic number one was additional firefighters. As was stated in the past, we have applied for the SAFER grant. We should know that by September. Currently enrolled in the Fox Valley Tech College Hiring Process. We will also create a local list, and there may be a need to adjust the PFC rules and regulations depending on these lists. Topic two is fire stations. We have one member of the Fire Department will be attending the 2022 Station Design Conference, May 24th through 26th, just as kind of a feeler to see what kind of interest there is and so forth. And I'll jump around here a little bit. Our facility is currently, station number one was built in 1966, makes it 56 years old. The roof is 25-plus years old. The HVAC system is outdated. Refrigerant and parts are no longer available. They have a preliminary estimate to repair that at 1.1 million. Windows need replacing. Plumbing needs repairs. No separate facilities for male and female firefighters. I was somewhat appalled when I walked in here, and the bedrooms are office dividers, so there is no privacy of any sort. And the sound and PA system needs to be upgraded. The one thing about that is if they do upgrade it, it can be transferred to a new facility or remodeled facility. Station number two was built in 1985, 37 years old. It was converted in 1997, 25 years ago, from a DMV testing station. It's currently too small to accommodate all of the equipment. The fitness area is scattered throughout the station. As my tour showed me, there's pieces in all different areas, so not the ideal situation. And again, no separate facilities for male or female firefighters, and office dividers are used as rooms. Station number three, built in 1999, 23 years old, and that one is probably, well, it is our newest, but it also could use in addition to better house apparatus and firefighters. So looking at this, our oldest, our youngest station is 23 years old. Our oldest one is 56 years old without any major improvements. Topic number three was the Fire Prevention Bureau. They're looking for a part-time fire inspector. They've created a job description. They've got $3,200 in the budget, which would allow for 10 to 15 hours a month, that 20 bucks an hour. And they will begin the process of finding someone to fill the role and see if that helps alleviate some of the inspection issues. And this will allow for focus to be strictly on inspections and not to be pulled away due to other calls. So they had a couple of people in mind. We'll see where that goes. Topic number four was response times. The Phoenix G2 Station Alerting System is, they are currently working on that. We will have more information to come on that system. Topic number five is EMS interfacility transfers. Review of the 4-6-20-22 meeting with the representative, Chief met with the representatives from Frehder. That will be an ongoing discussion. The fee structure, which you just saw at council tonight, which was passed, and there was a very lengthy discussion on this issue. Fire Department members would prefer to only do the emergent transfers, which aligns with the mission of the FD and meets with the limited availability of firefighters at this time. Some concerns discussed were employee burnout, lack of time for training and inspections, and overall morale of the Fire Department. So that will be an ongoing discussion between the committee and also between the Chief and Frehder and the other facilities. And topic six was training, and they are currently using the LexiPole training software for the paramedic refresher. An ongoing discussion regarding locations. There are options including keeping number two and three where they are with some renovation, moving station one west, sell it, number one property to assist with costs, keep and renovate all three stations, close or relocate station two, relocate station one, many options and scenarios to evaluate, and obviously, this will be a lengthy process, but we are working through it as best we can. So thanks to Chief, Kudak, Assistant Chief Beistill, and all the others involved. So far, we've been somewhat productive, and we'll look forward to getting through the rest of this. Thanks.
Thanks, Alderman Kayler. I'll open up if there's any questions. Yeah.
The SAFER grant, what's the potential size of that grant?
Would cover, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would cover nine firefighters for three years?
Yeah, so it's about 3 million, I think it equated to.
About 3 million?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we figured that would cover nine firefighters for three years if we get that, so that would be a good start. So we have applied for that, and we should know by September. Who knows? The odds of getting it, nobody really knows, but I trust we've put together good applications, so we'll see where it goes.
Thanks.
Yep.
Just one real quick question, Alderman Kayler. Did, in this tour you guys did, and if you, if you mentioned this already, I apologize, did you guys get down some preliminary figures as to what it might cost to?
We did not do the tour because our meeting ran way over before we got that far.
Okay.
We did not get to any preliminary numbers. I'm hoping once they get that design conference, that maybe we can start to put together some sort of preliminary. We have no plans.
I know you offered to help with that, so I thought that was great.
Yeah, until we've got a little more solid. Right now, we're looking at a box. You know, I can tell you, a build-out right now, anywhere from $200 to $300 a square foot for an average commercial project. How that relates to Fire Department, I really don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Then we have a report also by Alderman Kayler regarding the park and recommission. If you did have that?
I was not in attendance, so I do not have a report.
Sounds great. Well, I'm sure it was an awesome meeting. Yeah, yeah. All right. Number 12, a report by Alderman Dolnick or Mottel regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
We had the longest Plan Commission agenda in a long time.
Extensive.
Yeah. So I'll give you the highlights. First of all, we finally, it looks like we finally have an acceptable concept plan for the former concrete plant on Sand Drive. That was just a concept plan. Now they have to come back with a more formal site plan. But this was their fourth attempt at a concept plan, and it was much better than the other three. So that's finally moving along. There'll be some additional cell phone equipment put on existing towers that we granted conditional use permits for. Probably shouldn't even notice that too much. We approved the site plan for the former Shopko building, which you probably saw some renditions of that yourselves. We also approved the site plan for the Menards. They want to add on, and we also facilitated changes that would allow them to go into the park and ride, and then the park and ride would be moved over to what is currently overflow from Meyer. And we also approved the site plan for the redevelopment of the former Shell South, which will be replaced with two fast food places. And I'm drawing a blank. Was it Panera?
Chipotle in Panera.
Yeah, Panera and Chipotle. So it is not going to be an Olive Garden.
Or Chick-fil-A.
Or Chick-fil-A, yeah. Not yet, anyway. So that was, those are about the highlights.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick? Then, last but not least, we have a report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board.
Yeah, Downtown Bid Board met on Tuesday, April 5th at 8:15 in the Community Memorial Library Board Room, which was, was an interesting, nice, nice facility. Thank you, Library Board people. We did that largely because of the election, and that went well. Board reviewed and approved the meeting minutes and the financial report. We finally got our much-anticipated report from Rob Steiner of Steiner Electric. He presented the draft RFP that we'll use for future roofline LED lighting projects. We've got various alternatives for replacing the existing lights, as well as adding some additional lights to the sides and fronts, or sides and rears of the buildings. So basically, the, based on the comments and discussion that we had on that, was well received by the board. We reviewed and approved proposals from Scott's Landscaping for weed management and for roots and branches for the flower baskets, maintenance, and plants for adopta plot that are done for property owners and business tenants. I presented an overview of the bid facade grant program. We received 11 grant applications for a total of $121,462 in requested grant funding. We awarded five projects, a total of $16,055. The preference was given to river-facing projects and historic facade preservation. So if somebody had an architectural feature that had historic significance, that was given additional preference. We, to support a vibrant and welcoming downtown, the Bid Board sponsors free annuals, flowers for property and business owners. The flowers are planted outside businesses in the bid. The orders are due Friday, August, or April 29th at noon, and the order pickup will take place during the Downtown Bid Cleanup Day on Monday, May 16th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. in Old Settlers Park. Next Bid Board meeting is Tuesday, May 3rd, 8:15 a.m. here in the council chambers. Any questions?
Anything? No? Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will open up for announcements. Just a reminder, we do have our organizational meeting tomorrow. That's at 6 o'clock, not 6:30, 6 o'clock tomorrow. It sounds like we are going to try to get together for pictures, so please try to arrive here at 5:45 prior to our 6 o'clock meeting to do all of that. Any other announcements?
Actually, the Historic Barton Business Association will be joining the Roots and Branches for the Milwaukee River Cleanup on April 23rd. Show up at Barton Garden with a garbage bag and poker, or however you want to do it. 9:00 a.m. to noon, I think, is how we're doing it.
Awesome. Anything else? Then, having no further business for the common council, I adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a good night. Have a good night.